In accordance with the open public meetings Act P 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, I have the roll. I have to go get the sheet. So if you just want to, we'll do the minutes after we do the, uh, the, the public, the two me, the two?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, uh, yeah, we know who's here, so we'll, uh...
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get it, and then we'll do the minutes in the residence.
Okay, we'll start off with the minutes then. Um, regular meeting, September 7th, 2016. There's no comments or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes, but there's no discussion?
Um, can we do this by affirmation? Probably, or no?
That's what I was saying, Mike, I don't have the sheet with...
Oh, so you don't want to do the minutes?
No, no, I want to do that at the end, because I don't have, I'm going to get the sheet to make sure who, who I know can vote.
Okay, so what can we do? Just go right into public?
Just do the, do the, do the public.
Okay, okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion to open to the public, um, on any topic related to planning, uh, that's not, uh, the subject of a hearing tonight.
Second emotion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to speak on any matter that's not a hearing already tonight? Seeing no one, I move to close the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, go into the hearings. E&amp;J Equities LLC, PLN 16, four zeros and a six.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the public. My name is Francis Peelinis. My office is at 21 Clyde Road in Somerset, New Jersey. I'm pleased to represent E&amp;J Equities in this application tonight. Uh, by way of background, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval, the purpose of which is to install, uh, two ground-mounted solar panels and two arrays. Uh, one, one array will be on Block 502.02, Lot 32.01. The other array is proposed at 502.02, Lot 12.02. The access will be through Lot 33.03 and an existing access driveway to Lot 12.02. Once approved, lots 32.01 and 12.02 shall be consolidated into one lot. Uh, the purpose of the application is to supply renewable energies to the buildings on adjoining Lot 33.03 owned by Rollo Realty Corp. That, that houses the Rotor Clip complex, Rotor Clip Company being in Franklin Township many years. Under the municipal land use law, renewable energy facilities on parcels of land comprising 20 or more acres are permitted use within every industrial district. And this property is located in your M2 zone and industrial district. In addition, we qualify with the contiguous 20 acres because we're going to have 68 acres upon which these two solar arrays will sit. Uh, in addition to that, under the municipal land use law, solar facilities on inherently beneficial use, which is an added boost to a permitted use. Inherently beneficial use is generally defined by statute as serving the public good. Uh, in addition, Franklin Township has an ordinance that mimics the municipal land use law and is consistent with the municipal land use law and promotes renewable energy sources on contiguous property of, of 20 or more acres. I have two witnesses tonight. Jonathan Slass is my first witness. Jonathan is a principal of E&amp;J Equities. He's a principal of Rollo Realty, the owner of the adjoining property, and he's a principal of the Rotor Clip Company. Uh, he'll testify as to the purpose, the power requirements, and the environmental considerations that we saw in connection with an environmental review report that was furnished to us. Uh, he'll indicate that, uh, it's not feasible to locate, uh, the facilities on the roofs of the Rotor Clip buildings nor on the parking lot. Our second witness will be Mitch Ardmann. Mitch is our site engineer, our civil engineer. He prepared the engineering plan, and he's going to review the technical reports that were furnished to the applicant. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce John Slass.
If you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony? You're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, please.
Jonathan Slass, S-L-A-S-S, 26 Strawberry Lane, Warren, New Jersey.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
All right, John, uh, what's your relationship to E&amp;J Equities, the applicant?
I'm an owner.
Okay. And what's your relationship to Rollo Realty, the neighboring property owner?
I'm an owner.
Okay, and what's your relationship to the Rotor Clip Company, who has the buildings on the, uh, prop, next door property that you're hoping to serve?
I am an owner.
Okay, and these solar facilities, if approved, will serve the Rotor Clip, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, what, what is the anticipated output of the solar cells?
Um, I believe it's about 4.8 megawatt hours per year.
Okay. And do Rotor Clip's industrial operations require this much power?
Rotor Clip's industrial operations use about 6.5 megawatt hours per year.
Okay. Now, did you look at the option of installing, by the way, in addition to being a principal of those companies, uh, by, by way of background, do you have an engineering degree?
I have a Bachelor of Engineering from Vanderbilt University.
Okay. Now, did you look at the option of installing...
Is your client testifying as an engineer?
Uh, if it comes up on certain technicalities, but I don't...
I just want, I just want to be transparent.
Right, right, right. Uh, did you look at the option of installing solar panels on the roofs of the buildings and/or the parking lot?
That was our first option. Um, we didn't even anticipate a ground-based system until we realized that the, that we could only get about 500 kilowatt hours a year worth of power onto our roof. It was, um, about 1/10th to 1/8th of the total project.
All right, and you do understand that by virtue of the installation of the solar facilities, uh, you're subject to the tree removal and replacement ordinance, are you not?
I do.
Okay, and obviously, should the board grant the approval, then, uh, the approval would be subject to that, that ordinance and the trees that are being removed, you're going to have to replace and contribute to the, uh, the trust fund, the tree trust fund, is that correct?
We understand that.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Slass.
Any questions from the board? I'm guessing Ted might have one.
Well, I've, I've been familiar with the question about why do you have to cut down so many trees? And I was looking at the plans, and it, they don't really seem to show the limit of tree cutting in the more, around the more northerly, uh, section of, uh, solar cells. It shows an outer limit of trees along the sewer easement, but then it doesn't show any inner limit around the solar cells. So, except there is a statement, "Proposed open space no more lawn." I would just ask that you cut down no more trees than necessary to assure that the solar cells are not shaded.
Okay, first of all, our goal is to cut down the minimum number of trees that we absolutely possibly can.
Good.
Um, I have children, uh, one day I hope to have grandchildren, I plan to have people on this earth long after I'm done. Um, that being said, the reason we're putting up solar is for two very specific purposes. One of them is environmental. We use a lot of electricity. Um, to give you an idea, um, our electric usage has increased by about 50% in the last five years. Um, we, our business has been very successful, we have expanded globally, producing in New Jersey.
Franklin Township.
In Franklin Township. Thank you. And, um, we need, we need to get this system in so that we can continue to compete with competitors like the Chinese that have labor costs that are a fraction of ours, zero healthcare costs, et cetera. So, that is number one. The other reason that this is very important to me is a geopolitical reason. There are lots of people on this, on this planet that do not like the United States for various reasons. And most of them are, are, they're financed by energy. If Rotor Clip uses less energy in the form of natural gas, that will be more natural gas available to export or better leaving the ground. This is a win for Franklin, this is a win for my business, it's a win for our country. The only people that lose are people that, um, that make money, uh, putting carbon into the air, I suppose.
All right, so to answer Dr. Chase's question directly, you're not going to cut down any more trees than...
We will cut down the minimal number of trees that we can to allow the solar field to properly function. Obviously, shade on solar panels is not desirable.
Um, let me, let me just follow that up a second. Um, you did testify as to why you can't put them on roofs. Uh, can you say a little bit about why you can't put them over parking areas?
So, again, um, we looked at the roof and the parking area combined, and a few things came up. Number one, it was not enough. So, let me back up and talk, uh, for a minute about how we connect these solar panels to our power. So, Rotor Clip is actually four separate buildings, four separate meters. Logic would say electricity is instantly generated and instantly used, so therefore you should be able to connect anywhere on the circuit and everything should be good. Unfortunately, for private industry in the state of New Jersey, we have to connect no more than 95% of our usage to the meter where it's being used. So now imagine that I've got a solar field that's out in the area we're proposing and supplemented by the parking lot or the roof with little bits. Now all of a sudden, I've got multiple generating sources going to single connections. Okay, wait a second, that one's overloading that one, we've got to connect it to this one. It becomes very complicated in a hurry with lots of extra wires going in lots of directions. That's number one. Number two, we have a relatively tight parking lot, and it becomes a safety issue. How do we push this stuff around? Because solar panels do not stop snow, they do not stop ice. It would be really nice if they did, but if you've ever gone under one and been hit by snow falling off on your head, you know they don't stop it. Um, so there's a huge safety issue to keep our employees safe, we run a 24-hour-a-day operation, and we're very concerned about people getting hurt.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of this witness? Okay, you can proceed to, uh, hmm?
Public or...
We do that at the end.
Okay, thanks, John.
We operate a little differently than the planning board.
All right, Mitch? Have you sworn in?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony? You're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and provide your business address.
Certainly, uh, first initial F, Mitchell Ardmann, A-R-D-M-A-N, 575, uh, Route 28 in Raritan.
Yeah.
Closer. Gotcha.
Mitch, do your qualifications change at all since the last time you...
No, still licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
So, that I, I...
There you go, just, just save the question.
Since he's testified many times.
I, I, I understand.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't get drummed out of the...
All right, uh, Mitch, you and your firm prepared the site plan, it's before the board this evening?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Uh, you brought with you an exhibit that we pre-marked A1?
That's correct, with today's date.
And you want to identify the exhibit?
Uh, certainly, this is the overall plan, uh, Sheet 3, the same as in your set, and we've just, uh, colored it for clarity on this, on this plan.
Okay. Now, there's been talk about the disturbance, there obviously is going to be some tree disturbance if the solar panels are installed on-site. Uh, this property's in an M2 zone, is that not correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, if this property were to be developed with a standard development that would conform, uh, with, in all respects, with the zoning ordinances, the setbacks, size, and location, what would be the impact and, and the potential number of trees and disturbance if this were to be developed with anything other than, uh, solar panels?
Yeah, so you'd get, uh, more than even the disturbance we have now and obviously the, the downside of a paved parking lot and all that, that goes along with that. So this disturbance is, is, uh, less than it would be developed under the M2 zone.
All right, as a matter of fact, I think the standard, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the standard for impervious coverage in the M2 zone is 65%. Is that not correct?
That's correct, 65%.
Okay.
Let me just, uh, orient the board, since they have the rendering up here. Uh, 287 at the top of the plan here, uh, the, uh, Rotor Clip facility itself on the right side here, you can see portion of, uh, their last building. That driveway goes out to David Avinson to the right or to the east. You have Elizabeth Avenue here to the left, which is the west, uh, the school located on that portion. And you see the site rendered. Uh, you've heard about the, uh, stream corridor, so there's an existing driveway that crosses a part of that corridor, that's a paved driveway with, uh, basically a stone drive that goes out to Grant Street presently. And the corridor in question is running basically in the east-west direction, uh, through the site, and there's another small leg that runs in a northerly, north-south direction, uh, between the drive and the northerly, uh, solar array area.
All right, Mitch, did you have an opportunity to review with our client Julio Vega's, uh, October 31st, 16 memorandum?
I, yes, I did.
And, uh, basically, you're, we have already or will comply with all general review comments, all grading and utility comments, and all landscaping comments.
Yes.
And there's actually only one item you want to address, and that's number 27, uh, where Julio agrees that a waiver should be granted, but you want to explain the request for the waiver.
Certainly, so, uh, based on his first review, uh, we did some plan modifications. We pulled the arrays, uh, further out of the, um, uh, the stream corridor area, and we addressed the stormwater comments. Uh, with one of those, we need a, a waiver, again, he's in agreement of, and it's just an analysis done on the groundwater effect, and typically that'd be done if we're in the neighborhood of a house, and you might be impacting a basement. And it was clear that there's no houses or basements anywhere, uh, near this project, so he was, uh, supportive of our waiver of that.
All right, in addition to Julio's report, did you review with our client...
So everything else in Julio's report is good?
Is good.
We're good to go?
Yep.
All right, uh, in addition to, um, Mr. Vega's report, did you have an opportunity to review with our client, the planner's report, Mark Healy's, uh, October 27th memorandum?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and, uh, has our client agreed to comply with all review comments?
Uh, no.
With the exception that you need to address, uh, Item 1A, a waiver request from the stream corridor ordinance to allow approximately 90 feet of the 15-foot wide gravel access drive to traverse the stream protection area?
That's correct. He had, uh, one comment, we actually, going back to Mr. Chase's comment on tree removal, we moved the basin further out of the treed area, and I just didn't slide the tree removal line with it. The actual grading is further, so we'll, we'll do that, that's a plan clarification.
Good.
With regard to the, um, uh, hardship waiver for the crossing, there's, there's five points in your ordinance, A through E are the points to deal with. And basically, the gist of it is to minimize, do you have to go there, and have you minimize? So basically, the question, do we have to cross? The shorter answer is yes. Uh, the upland area for the northerly array, I'm pointing out here, and you see the stream corridor, so we have, there's no upland area to get there, so we have to cross that to get to the stream corridor. If you look closely, you could see there are some wider sections, uh, to the south and to the north of our crossing, so we did pick the most narrow area to cross that. So by doing that, we've minimized the crossing area, we've minimized the clearing required, and, um, we've picked the, the best point. So those are, uh, the criteria of the hardship, uh, to, to get that crossing in that area. Uh, the last point is that we have submitted to DNR Canal, Soil Conservation, and DEP, and that's a criteria. Uh, we do meet their criteria for crossings, general permits, et cetera, but they are pending those, uh, approvals.
And I, I assume you're going to be like, you know, the stream, well, what, like I have a culvert under the road so that it runs, or how, how'll that work?
This actually is, is a minimal, I don't know if everybody here would actually call it a stream, you, you could step across it.
Oh, okay.
It's a, it's a regulated water feature. We're ac, we're actually just going to have the stone going right through, it's less disturbance than putting a pipe in and outfall and, and everything.
Okay.
So that, that's the design on it.
It's more like a swell than, you know...
Yeah, a small swell, correct, yes.
And, and just for the record, what's the status of outside agency approvals?
Uh, they are pending. We've had review letters, and we're addressing those as the township comments as well.
And you don't anticipate any problem with obtaining those approvals?
We do not.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Ardmann.
Questions from the board? I've got one. So, uh, the environmental report raises an interesting question. Um, you're proposing planting 44 trees along 287 in front of existing trees, which they say seem unnecessary, they can be used elsewhere. So to that point, I, I'm just going to ask if you are trying to just kind of shoehorn trees in, on the site because, you know, you're, you're trying to do the right thing, or, or would they really be better used as a contribution elsewhere?
We, we could do either, to be honest. I had our landscape architect go out there, um, while the, all the panels are, are facing away from 287, you do have gaps, especially at this time of year, in the, in the wooded area there.
Mm-hmm.
So we figured that would provide a backstop, and, you know, he felt that would, you know, provide a solid evergreen, four, four-season evergreen.
Okay.
We could go either way with it, though, but I, I think they'll serve well there.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, if they're just kind of stuck in the middle of the woods, we've, we've experienced that before, they don't do well, so, you know...
Yeah, you try to pick varieties that are, you know, the shade-appropriate, uh, evergreens.
Uh, just one other question on that environmental report, uh, says that there's nine acres of solar cells are proposed, and why are 17 acres being cleared? I know you said that we're going to be reduce it, minimize it.
Right.
What is the number that you have?
So...
And why so big of an area?
A couple of the other areas, one is the detention basin, which I meant to mention. So with our stormwater management plan, which was also raised, we have a detention basin proposed. So there'll be, there'll be a couple of acres for the detention basin, and then there are areas that for, uh, shade purposes on the solar need to be cleared, and with the driveway access. So all those add up, plus the panels, to equal the total disturbance area. Believe me, we did try and squeeze it down, because the more we disturb, we owe you more money for trees, so, yeah.
It's a sizable contribution, and we can buy a lot of trees with that, so, which we'll do. Um, any other questions from the board? No? Uh, seeing none, let's, uh, I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second emotion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this application? Coming once, twice, thrice. Okay, seeing no one, I move the public portion close.
Second emotion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, summation?
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, it's an application for preliminary and final site plan approval, uh, it's renewable energy, uh, it's inherently beneficial use, it's a permitted use, uh, the applicant has, uh, has agreed to substantially comply with all, all the reports and comments that have been raised by your professionals, and we respectfully request approval.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the application.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Karazi?
Yes.
Shiver?
Yes.
Ragnah?
Yes.
Chairman Arsini?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so we're on to, uh, L'Oréal addition, uh, PLN 16, four zeros and a seven. Because you know, Mitch, one of these days, I'm going to eliminate some zeros. So I'm going to do it. It's my mission.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of, uh, planning board, members of the public.
You're here for an encore, excellent.
Yeah, Fran, right, yeah. It's an encore.
Let's see if you can do as well with this one as you just did with that.
Well, we, we hope so, all right? At least L'Oréal hopes so, okay. Francis Peelinis representing the applicant for the record. Uh, by way of background, this is also an application for preliminary and final site plan approval, this time to construct a 21,831 square foot addition to the applicant's building on Lot 10.32, and it's part of a renovation of L'Oréal's production area and designed to improve the efficiency of its operations. Uh, this property's located on the north side of Commerce Drive, has a street address of 100 Commerce Drive, and it's located in your M2 industrial zone. Uh, of, of some import is the fact that no new variances are requested or required in conjunction with this application. Uh, I have basically one witness, Craig Styers, he's our applicant civil engineer and prepared the engineering plans. I do have with us tonight, though, Bart Jones, uh, who happens to be the Vice President of Engineering for L'Oréal in Franklin Township, who will also be the, uh, Construction Project Manager in case the board or the public has any questions relating to, to any item that Craig cannot address. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Craig Styers.
So the same drill for you is for Mitch? You still good?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, it's, it's, sorry.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and provide your address, please.
Craig Styers, S-T-I-R-E-S, 43 West High Street, Somerville.
So excited to see him.
I, I, you listen, yeah. I'm sorry I stole your time.
Okay, and you still have your license, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, now, you and your firm prepared the plans that are before the board this evening, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you want to describe the applicant's proposal? And I note that, uh, you already pre-marked, uh, A1 exhibit. What is A1, since you'll be testifying about it?
Uh, it's essentially an aerial photo of the property with the addition superimposed, uh, just to orient everybody, so...
All right, what is the applicant proposing?
Uh, they're looking to construct a 21,831 square feet, uh, off the northerly section or the rear of the building.
Okay, and, uh, is it part of its renovation of its production area design to improve efficiency of operations?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, there were some questions, uh, as to impervious coverage, are we increasing it, reducing it, is it the same? You want to explain what's going on with the impervious coverage?
Yeah, that's kind of why I brought the aerial as well. Um, there we go. Uh, you can see the area in the, in the aerial, which is behind the building, uh, it wa, used to be the former location of the, uh, the loading for the facility. Uh, one of the previous applications that we completed, uh, I believe back in 2008, was to have a large addition off the Eastley side, and then the loading docks were relocated to the Eastley side of that building. And hence, the, uh, the loading in the rear was no longer needed. Uh, that is the location of the proposed addition at this time. Uh, the discrepancy that we had is when we calculated the impervious coverage, uh, we erroneously considered the stone as pervious as opposed to impervious, so that was just a discrepancy. So what, essentially what is, the change is there's a small grassed area on the end that totals 833 square feet, and then we are actually removing pavement and, um, planting or converting to, to lawn area between the curb line and the building. Uh, all, uh, once it's all said and done, it's actually a reduction of impervious coverage of 844 square feet.
Right.
And we'll correct that on the, on the, uh, the chart.
Okay, so there's a reduction in impervious coverage?
Yes.
Is that absolutely clear?
Yep.
Okay, uh, do you have an opportunity to review with, uh, our client, the, uh, October 20th, 19, 19, 1916? Maybe I was, hey, I don't know. Wow, wow.
Oh, boy.
Wow. 2016 memorandum?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and is it true that the applicant can and will comply, uh, with all of the items therein except for, uh, general review co, well, we discussed general review comments one and two, impervious?
Correct.
Because we already discussed that, we don't need to comply with it because we're reducing it.
Right.
Uh, now, do you want to discuss the proposed waiver from stormwater management?
Um...
Well, we don't need a waiver now, right?
Not really, no, because...
There's, there's, there's no, there's no waiver.
That's right. It's gone, yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, you want to discuss landscaping, lighting comments, 10 and 11?
Um, landscaping is not a problem, the, the lighting, um, there is perimeter lighting around the outside of the, what I call the loop road, which goes behind the building. Although we are eliminating a light that previously illuminated the loading dock, the loading dock is going away. So I don't believe there's any need for supplemental lighting. Bart has even said he would prefer to keep the lighting as is to not affect any more of the neighbors next door. So we would like to keep it the way it is because it seems to be adequate as is.
Now, did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Healy's October seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen memorandum?
Yes.
Alright, can you clarify the correct square footage of the building addition and the total proposed square footage?
The chart that is on the plans is correct. I think what happened there was, we did go through a number of iterations with the project going bigger, smaller, what have you. And probably the number in the application was not updated, but the plan is correct with the increase being twenty-one thousand square feet.
So your testimony is the chart is the correct version of it?
Yep.
Okay. And your client has agreed to comply with the planner's review comments, but would like to discuss item number one regarding the loading area function on the site. After the building addition.
Number one. Oh, that was just, that was what we discussed before. You can see on the Eastly side with the previous addition, the loading was relocated prior to this project. So therefore, the area of this addition is no longer needed as a loading area.
Alright. And did you review the October thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen memorandum of John House, the Director of Fire Prevention?
Yes.
And will comply with that, those directives?
Yes.
Alright, and then. Who is? Who's Mr. Cianfani? Raymond Cianfani? Public Works, okay. Did you review the Public Works comment, Mr. Cianfani? He says it doesn't appear that any service connections will be added or removed for the addition. Do you agree with that? Or what?
What type of service connections?
Water.
Oh, no. No changes.
Okay. Have no further questions. Oh, outside agency approval, just for the record, what's the status of the outside agency?
We have all of them. We have DNR, we have the county and solar ocean in hand already.
Is there any landscaping at all?
There's one tree being removed and we are adding it to the corner of Dahmer and Commerce, because that seems to be the point of discussion all the time.
Okay.
So we're supplementing that little open area, I guess you could say. So with the solar project, we added about ten trees. This one, we're adding one more, so we're doing our best to cover up that area.
You're not going to plant it in the midst of everything though, right?
Nope, it's. Down in the opening here, a lot of the neighbors have voiced their opinion about this little opening. So each time we have an opportunity, we look to kind of buffer that a little bit better.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions from the board? To my right, no. Okay, so make a motion to open to the public? All in favor? Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this application, sir?
Craig, could you make sure that that mic that he's using is on?
Or better yet, just hand him yours. Yeah, there you go. Problem solved. Just hold that mic real close to your mouth.
This one?
Yeah.
Can I swear in? My name?
If I could swear in quickly, just raise your right hand for me. Do you swear that any testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, please.
Winston G. Belmar. Excuse me, you got to put the mic really close to your mouth so that we can hear. Winston G. Belmar. B.E.L.M.A.R. And I live at sixty-nine Dahmer Road. I occupied that facility back in nineteen ninety-nine. What's mentioned here that this is the final? Site plan. Is this correct?
No, no, it's a term of art. This is a preliminary and final site plan for this project.
Right.
We anticipate there may be future development.
Okay, so this is, have you communicated to any of the neighbors prior to this? Well, this is the first, this is the first notification that I have received. In reference to this addition.
Correct, we provided the appropriate notice under the municipal land use law. We're required to serve notice of this hearing on all persons who own property within two hundred feet of the application. Yes, and we did that.
But what I'm saying is this the first notification, this is the first notification? The only notification, the first and only that's required per law, yes. Per law? Yeah. Okay.
I think it's a little confusing, Mr. Belmar, because they're coming in for final and I guess it begs the question, how did we get to final if we have?
That's what, I mean, that's where I'm going with, yeah. I mean, it's final.
Given the nature of the type of application they have, it's not an application that requires a significant number of hearings. It's something that's done typically by a board in a single hearing. When the applicant comes in, presents their testimony to the professionals and allows the board an opportunity to ask their questions. You know, on a larger application, you might have multiple hearings, you might have preliminary approval and then come back for final approval at a later time. But given the nature of this type of application, that wouldn't be something that would typically happen.
Okay. You mentioned a moment ago that Commerce and Dahmer, that location will be directly affected?
No.
No?
The intersection of Commerce and Dahmer, you would not see the addition at all. I testified that there is an opening right here that in previous applications, the neighbors have complained about this opening and being further landscaped, which is what we're doing.
Where is the, where is the expansion going to take place?
In this red area right here.
And this is Commerce Road, yeah?
Commerce is along the bottom here.
So what?
This is Commerce, this is Dahmer.
Okay.
This is the area that you don't see.
Okay. Alright. Now, since two thousand, how much expansion in terms of square footage has L'Oreal conducted on this site? Do you know?
Roughly two hundred thousand square feet?
So you're saying over the past seventeen years, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet?
I think that's.
I do. Bart Jones, five J Drive, Randolph, New Jersey. Last name is Jones, J.L.N.E.S. Yes, that's correct.
We got to get you your mic because it won't pick up right.
In L'Oreal, here, roughly.
I've been in Franklin for roughly ten years. Yes.
Okay, so you said over the past seventeen years, L'Oreal has expanded over a hundred thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet.
Yeah, if I could show up on the plan, I can show you. So the original facility was like this and then in two thousand and six, this addition was added to the east. That's approximately a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
Okay.
For your five-year plan, are you moving forward, are you, any proposal to expand? Any further in terms of gross expansion?
There are no firm plans beyond this at this point, but we're always looking to try to attract more activity to New Jersey. So it's kind of something we go through each year to see if we can get more activity here, but at this point, I don't have more activity.
Okay, you may have mentioned earlier on that the expansion would be specifically allocated to manufacturing. The manufacturing, are you going to be increasing your solvent processing within the plant? And by how much?
No, this isn't really related to any of the, I guess, solvent type of materials.
What type of manufacturing you're going to be doing?
It's basically allowing us to expand some packaging equipment, so it doesn't really change the mix or the activity of our factory.
How many packaging lines?
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, but twenty-one thousand square feet, that's a lot of manufacturing area for just for packaging. So you are going to testify that there are not going to be any additional process solvent manufacturing or packaging? I just want to interrupt you for a minute, sir. Is this questioning going anywhere? This is a. I am going with. I'm just saying it's a site plan application for permitted use, so we're here to answer your questions, but those questions that you're talking about right really aren't germane to this board's decision-making process. We're really talking about the site plan issues of this, not their internal operations.
Well, Vince, let me just let him see where this is going because I mean, he could easily come back and just ask the same question as a planning question within the general public, so we're here now, so let's go.
Where I'm going specifically is, you may have mentioned that in essence, you're going to be doing manufacturing. Okay, and what I'm questioning, as a neighbor within close proximity to the site, you've expanded significantly over the past ten, fifteen years. And I think the board needs to know if there are going to be any additional solvent that you would be using in your manufacturing process, how much the as-is condition would be changing? And if in essence, you have, you plan to deploy any sort of emissions control in the atmosphere. That, are there going to be additional rooftop units? Is the decibel levels, I mean, that area is rather noisy. All of those things are not controlled by this board. They're all controlled by their agencies. For instance, the solvent issue is controlled by outside agencies, the decibel level is controlled by the health departments. Those are great questions, and I'm not saying they're not, but those questions are not site plan issue questions. Those are things that are controlled by outside agencies, not by this board.
Well, and also to be more specific, if they were the subject of this application, we would get notification of that. We would get from the health department a report about the decibel levels if there were any on there. And then you just heard the testimony that this is only due to packaging, so I think we've established conclusively that, you know, the manufacturing process at this juncture isn't changing. Well, you're packaging whatever your existing manufacturing is, that's what he tested. Well, that's what, well, it's whatever they're doing now. It's whatever they're doing now. And don't forget, this is not a zoning board. There's no variances here due to zoning. It is a manufacturing M-two zone and this is a permitted use in the zone. So, you know, this is a manufacturing area and we've heard testimony that the manufacturing isn't being affected, just the packaging. So, I mean, at this juncture, though your questions are very relevant, I would say that, you know, you know, if there's expansion in the future, you're going to be notified because you already got this notice, so you're clearly within two hundred feet of the facility. So you're going to be able to come and ask any of these questions if there's future expansion as well. To which they may be more relevant than this really small little addition on the back.
You know, you'd be welcome to come by and walk through the factory. I can show you the types of controls we have. I think you'd be pretty impressed. I mean, L'Oreal is really over the edge with environmental controls, so be happy to bring you through and show you what we're doing.
Okay, where I'm going is that if you're going to be granting the facility, okay, to Bill, a matter of fact, there are other components to that manufacturing facility that could adversely impact upon the livelihood or the quality of life to the neighbors. I mean, just accepting that, okay, it's packaging, I welcome the opportunity to come take a look. I mean, there are other components that go in to manufacturing. And like I said, those other components, you know, like with the health, if you think there's too much noise or there are other nuisances, alls you have to do is make a complaint and we will go out, the health department will go out, and L'Oreal has been fabulous that whenever we've had an issue with anything, and there have been very few, we go out, they take care of that issue. So if you have any problem, we're here to assist you in that. Too much noise, you call us. Well, to call the health department. If there's noxious gas coming out, which there hasn't been, I'm just making something up, call us. We will notify the appropriate agency, whether it's our internal agency or an outside agency.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, move to close the public portion. All in favor?
Alright. Alright, very briefly, an application preliminary and final site plan approval for this twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-one square foot addition. No new variances, it's permitted use, agreed to just about everything in the professional reports, we respectfully request approval.
Entertaining motion? Seconded by Ted? So we have a motion, we have a second?
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
Guyver.
Yes.
Mr. Manzare.
Yes.
Mr. Ragnow.
Yes.
Mr. Mola. Chairman Arcini.
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thanks. Alright, so let's take care of the first bit of business. Let's do a roll call.
I have everyone down. And just for the record, you know, we had everyone here, Mr. Manzare, Mr. Mola arrived at seven fifty-three, which is why they were able to vote on the second matter.
Right. So let's do, try once again for the minutes for the regular meeting of September seventh.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
McGuyver. Mr. Ragnow.
Yes.
Mr. Mola. Chairman Arcini.
Yes.
And a motion for the regular meeting on September the twenty-first. Second.
Second.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
Guyver.
Yes.
Mr. Manzare.
Yes.
Mr. Ragnow.
Yes.
Mr. Mola.
Okay, so we have a couple of resolutions and the first is PLN sixteen with four zeros and a four, Bellagi Property Solutions LLC.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
Mr. Guyver. Mr. Ragnow.
Yes.
Mr. Mola. Chairman Arcini.
Yes.
And then we have the Canal Walk General Development Plan. Which came fairly, you're not going to be able to do it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
Mr. Ragnow.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. And last but not least, vouchers for our Board Attorney, Clark and Nivio, L.P.C. For October and November, can we do those together?
Yeah.
As in some, so, what is that, sixteen hundred sixty-six, six-six-six, yeah.
You just wanted to say that, didn't you? I know you wanted to say that, Mike.
Yeah.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howk.
Yes.
Mr. Karazi.
Yes.
Guyver.
Yes.
Mr. Manzare.
Yes.
Ragnow.
Yes.
Mola. Chairman Arcini.
Yes. And you're welcome. And our next meeting is?
The next scheduled meeting is in December.
Okay.
The first Wednesday. We don't, we have some applications in the hopper. I can't tell you whether or not we're going to have that meeting or it's going to be the second meeting or in January.
So nothing else for the month of November? Nothing else for the month of November?
No.
Alright. Enjoy Thanksgiving, everyone. Second, and we are adjourned.